Okay, so we're going over.
Okay, we are going to reconvene to open session and it is 6:31. Lucy, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we are on E, Report of Board Action Taken in Closed Session. In closed session, the Board took action to issue notices of release and on reelection to temporary certificated employees identified by employee identification numbers pursuant to Education Code Section 44954B effective at the end of the 20, it says, yeah, 2019, '20 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The list of employees can be found on our back table. And that was a roll call vote as follows, it's 5-0, so Matt Brock, yes, Megan Crawford, yes, Rick Phillips, yes, Lynda Reed, yes, and Suzanne Seymour, yes. Okay, item number two. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to issue notice to one Coordinator, Student Services, employee number 1715, of reassignment for the 2021 school year. And it's a 5-0 vote, so that'd be Matt Brock, yes, Megan Crawford, yes, Rick Phillips, yes, Lynda Reed, yes, and Suzanne Seymour, yes. The Board approved the settlement agreement for OAH case number 2019101074 by a roll call vote as follows. Suzanne Seymour, yes, Rick Phillips, yes, Megan Crawford, yes, Matt Brock, yes, Lynda Reed, yes. The district will provide student-related services, and the student waived all claims against the district. And the Board approved the settlement agreement for OAH case number 2020010552 by a roll call vote as follows, it's 5-0, Suzanne Seymour, yes, Rick Phillips, yes, Megan Crawford, yes, Matt Brock, yes, Lynda Reed, yes. The district will provide student-related services, and the student waived all claims against the district. Okay, so moving right along to F, Approval of the Regular Board of Education Meeting Agenda for February 26, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented for the February 26th meeting.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, the motion carries 5-0. All right, Public Communications. G1, The public will be given the opportunity to address the Board at this time on topics not listed on this agenda. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The Board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. The Board cannot engage in public discussion during this portion of the agenda due to the Ralph M. Brown Act. Okay, so at this point, if anyone would like to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda, right now would be the opportunity to do that. And Jenna, do we have any cards? No. All right, but we do have one card that you thought might come late that's asked to speak. Okay, so we'll see if that person, it's a student, so we'll see if they get here. Then, moving right along to G2, Public Comment on Open Session Agenda Items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the Board during each agenda item. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The Board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. So if you would like to speak on a specific item on the agenda, and there's agendas in the back of the room, and also in the back of the room, there's the binder of all the documents that we're looking at tonight in case you don't have a computer or you don't have them printed out. So if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, now would be the time to fill a card out and provide it to Ms. Beck, and then she will provide it to me when the item comes up for discussion. Okay, moving right along to H, Approval of the Minutes. So we need an approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes for February 12th, 2020.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 12th, 2020 as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries 5-0. So now we are on to I, Board President Announcements. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being recorded and livestreamed via a link on the district website. PvPUSD is currently enrolling new students for the 2021 school year. For details about new student enrollment at all grade levels, please visit the district website at pvpusd.net. All currently enrolled PvPUSD students entering 9th grade in fall 2020 must select their high school of attendance on the Ares Parent Portal during the month of February. Students may choose to attend either Palos Verdes High or Palos Verdes Peninsula High School. The District, Peninsula Education Foundation, and the Palos Verdes Peninsula Council of PTAs will be hosting a parent wellness symposium focusing on student health, wellness, and connectedness on Saturday, March 21, 2020, from 8:30 to noon at Palos Verdes High School. Additional information will be shared with parents and posted on the district website. The District Kids Corner Program is offering a spring break day camp for elementary school students. The camp will be at Soliato and is open from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. More information is available on the district website. The Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder has selected six of our schools as voting centers. Starting Saturday, February 29th, and continuing through Election Day, Tuesday, March 3rd, voters can visit the following school voting center locations. Cornerstone, Lenada Bay, Miracatalina, those are all elementary schools, Miralest Intermediate, Palos Verdes High School, and Vista Grande Elementary School. The voting centers will be open Saturday, Sunday, and Monday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For public health updates related to the coronavirus, parents can continue to check the district website for Los Angeles County Public Health Communications. Okay, now J, Report of Student Board Members. Lucy, that would be you.
Good evening, thank you for having me. As the weather starts to heat up, so do the schedules of our Seekings. A couple of weeks ago, the Project Runaway Club hosted their annual fashion show, deemed "A Night at the Disco," to fundraise for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Our NPR was packed for both nights of the show, and we successfully raised over $22,000 for the foundation. This past week, PV was home to 500 visiting students from the Saitama Sakai High School in Japan, giving both our students and their students a chance to learn more about our different cultures. Last Friday, BTC hosted their annual Tritons Walk in honor of Dr. Haver and Coach Edelman this year. Thanks to our student body and teachers, we raised over $20,000 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Last week, the College and Career Center hosted an informational session for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors to educate our students about the California Public Colleges. And PV recognized our seven national merit finalists of 2020. To help celebrate Black History Month, the Black Student Union at PV hosted a free presentation of the film Harriet, which gave our Seekings a greater perspective on the significance of this month. Following a successful science fair, three PVHS projects will be advancing to the LA County Science Fair to compete at the next level in March. Additionally, three Seekings earned first place at the Raytheon Engineering Games, and two of Pivot's VEX teams traveled to Google's corporate headquarters to compete in Google's VEX Signature High School event. Coming up, PV High will be used as a voting center, and students are signing up for this year's Scholar Quiz themed Stars and Stripes with a possible $1,000 cash prize. This event is a Seeking favorite, so good luck to all teams competing. As for sports, baseball had a successful week against West in El Segundo, and softball beat St. Joseph's. Girls soccer beat La Serna in CIF quarterfinals and went on to play south in the semifinals this past Saturday. Our Seekings played hard but ended up losing in overtime. Regardless, we are all proud of our girls for a successful season. Girls lacrosse beat Agora recently, and varsity and JV song placed first and second respectively at the West Coast Elite Dance Competition this past weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a lot, wow, a lot going on, huh? Okay, so may we, let's move on to K, Report of the Palos Verdes Faculty Association Leadership. C.C.
Good evening, how is everybody? I have not a whole lot, but I'm always happy to celebrate our teachers. Shout out, this one goes to Lisa Turner at Soliato. She took it upon herself to create a website for fellow teachers to help us all stay connected and share important information, so shout out for Lisa. At Ridgecrest, Jessie Straub and Christina Sanada. Our school counselors have done an amazing job communicating with all students and staff on issues, both academic and behavioral. Their work has helped teachers meet the needs of their students. Thank you to counselors. At Miralest, this one goes to Anne Keller. Ms. Keller's 7th grade ELA classes were treated to guest speaker April White in the fall. Not only is Ms. White a PvPUSD parent, but she is a successful young adult fantasy fiction writer. The students learned about using the website goodreads.com as a tool for creating a positive digital footprint, which is awesome. I have all three middle schools represented, PBIS a shout out for raising $44,000 in their fundraiser, which is fantastic. And back at Miralest, Dominica Tarrika. Dominica is the new 7th grade special ed case carrier at Miralest this year, she's doing an amazing job. Case carriers are the unsung heroes for some of the most vulnerable students in our district. Way to go, Dominica, so shout out for her. I've been, as president, visiting all of the school sites, and I'm about halfway there. I've visited Lenada Bay, Silver Spur, Vista Grande, Soliato, Point Vicente, Miralest, and Cornerstone in the past few months, so happy to say that's a lot. I know you guys do that all the time, it's just juggling it all. And this time of year, as most elementary and middle school teachers know, is the end of the trimester, which means one thing, report cards, so that's where middle and elementary schools are working hard as we speak, so that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Very much. Okay, so there's no L, there's no one is available tonight from CSEA, so then moving right along to M, Report of this Southern California Regional Occupational Central Board Member, Matt Brock.
Thank you. I believe you all received a copy of the SSC report, Dr. Chernus forwarded that. We have not had a meeting since my last report. The next board meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night where we will go over the SSC plan. And I want to take this opportunity, just if you fellow members of the Board had concerns or comments, Dr. Chernus provided a wonderful analysis of what he saw from that report, but I want to give everybody else an equal opportunity so that I can fairly represent the Board tomorrow night. By my numbers, SCROCK is costing about $33.56 per student. That's when you take just the gross operating, less the grants, and divide it by the enrolled students, it's about $33.56 per student. Each district is being charged $12.34 per student. So you can see, just on gross numbers, they're operating at a couple thousand dollars per student loss. My recommendation is that we eliminate places where classes are redundant. If we have four local districts who are all providing the same program in-house, it doesn't necessarily make sense to SCROCK to do it as well. There's an example where we would actually, we're one of the few that is not offering it in-house, but recommendation to SCROCK would be, let's really focus on the core competencies. We need to kind of shrink down these programs, make them affordable. We want this program to continue, and we cannot afford to be everything to everyone, right? We really need to say, this is where we need to focus our efforts to benefit the most students and be able to keep this program viable. But with that, I would love to hear other comments. If you don't want to do them now, please feel free to email me your comments so that I can present them tomorrow night.
Okay, Dr. Chernus, did you want to give us a brief synopsis? No, you don't, nothing to say.
This is an opportunity for the Board to make their comments. I offered some feedback, I had a dialogue with Dr. Butler as well. Board Member Brock kind of summarized that the cost to run the program is exceeding their revenues. The other thing in the report that we noted was the decline in students over time, and so to be able to sustain that, there's definitely issues to be addressed. I think we noted 63% vacancy rate, I think that was what Dr. Butler came up with, so on room usage, so there's quite a bit to look at here. But I would agree redundancy in classes is something that, you know, may not be the best use of SCROCK.
So Lynda, does anyone have anything?
I just would like, you know, because like I mentioned earlier, Dr. Chernus did provide, Dr. Butler, an analysis, and, you know, marketing to more adult students is not necessarily going to save this program, nor would a charter school implementation there. And then as you mentioned, you know, SCROCK is saying that they're operating lean, but we haven't seen a reduction in budget despite the fact that the numbers have really plummeted since 2013, 2014. And one of the biggest hits actually came from Inglewood, which I think had roughly 400 students attending in 2013, 14, and now it's zero. PvPUSD, I think, had about 189, and now we're 190, so we stayed pretty consistent throughout. A lot of districts stayed within a few percent, but losing 400 students out of Inglewood is something that, and you are all aware, President Seymour explained it very well previously as a previous representative to SCROCK, about how state funding was cut. And they're operating on a $10 million grant that decreases every year. So that's why it's critical that we find out what the break even point is and how we can salvage this program. So any of your input from the Board, or anybody's input, would be greatly appreciated. I believe in this program. I believe it's something positive for our students.
Okay, Lynda, do you want to add, mention anything?
Just, I guess I would think of it this way, things that I would love for you to ask tomorrow, not that you would know the answer right now, but that they would be able to, like, so, I mean, when I looked at it and I saw exactly that, that they're not making any cuts anywhere, I mean, we've cut a million here and a million there, and they're not cutting anything. They've got a $400,000 administrative cost, they have $271,000 they spent on something called classified supervisors. Like, that seems like a lot. I don't know, that could be very justified, I just don't know, because it wasn't, the school services didn't explain it all.
Some of those are justified, like, you have to have a supervisor to teach a certain class, but how can we maybe outsource that, right?
Or how could they, how could they look at making cuts somewhere? Because it just seemed really, really high. They weren't, the report mentioned career guidance people that go to the schools, and that was a big deal of what they do. Is that, is that effective? Does that increase enrollment? If it doesn't, then why are they doing it? Why are we spending money for that, right? So it's that kind of question. They, it mentioned a decline in adult enrollment, but no plan to really address getting adults in there to generate some revenue. And just that the cost per class varies wildly, and so I was surprised by that, that some of the classes were really expensive and some didn't cost very much at all, so what's the, what's the strategy of increasing the enrollment in the expensive classes or getting rid of them altogether and focusing on something else? I just feel like they haven't done a lot of work on being lean to keep it going, because I think we all believe in the program, but they just haven't, they're just kind of, I just feel like the superintendent is just kind of sitting there, but he hasn't really come up with a plan, and I didn't see the school services report as really offering suggestions that are going to require tough decisions. I guess that's, that's what I saw.
Right, and I think this, the SSC report, Suzanne, you can speak to this better than I could, but they've been waiting for it for quite a while to actually see where we stand, because...
Originally, we're going to do something... Different, right, and that everybody said, no, wait, that's not what we need, right? So...
So, but now that we have this information, now we can make, make those decisions, we can actually start plotting the path forward. And again, it's going to, I'd appreciate all the input we can get from this Board and the community on how to do that.
Correct, do you have anything?
So, I mean, I guess I think that the issue is, to some extent, that we're more dependent on SCROCK than some of the other partner districts, and especially two of them really aren't playing ball, right? And so the question is, what's the best way to get the, you know, induce the other two to play ball, or to, you know, somehow change the makeup of SCROCK so that the people that are in the SCROCK consortium, or whatever you want to call the joint powers, are all committed to it? You know, and is there an option to change the membership somehow to do that?
I am happy to report that the new Torrance Board Member is very much in support of SCROCK, so hopefully that will...
And they're having a change in superintendent as well.
So Dr. Haller, I believe...
No, Torrance.
On Torrance, yes, okay.
He retired, right? He announced his retirement, so...
So it's a lot of work ahead of us, it's going to be a lot of tough decisions, but again, the end goal is something that's going to be better than nothing, so we might have to make some tough choices.
You'll definitely be making tough choices. Megan, did you want to say anything? Did you have any comments on this?
No, just Rick's point, I think, is making sure that the districts that are in there, like, they should all agree that this is an important program and see what we can do to get everyone on board for that, so...
So my guess, my only, I mean, it's, the report was not what I expected, to be honest with you. I thought it was going to come back and say, okay, everyone needs to start paying $2,500 per class, or we're going to go broke. So it doesn't say that, except that the very end says, if you don't accomplish something, you're all going to go broke. So I'm like, oh, that's really great, you gave us almost no options, because nobody wants to pay more. So that's not going to happen. People are going to pay more, or it's going to go away. So Inglewood's going to have to make a decision, either going to pay to be part of the, be part of the JPA, or they're not going to be part of the JPA. Torrance is kind of half in, half out, we'll see what happens with them. They are developing all their own classes, so we're not doing that as a district, right? So when this gets resolved, then it's going to help, once you know, it's not going to be next meeting, that may be in two or three months, it'll help us decide how we make changes here, because we're going to have to fill the gap if our kids are not going to be getting something through SCROCK. So we're going to have to figure that out, even though we would not say we have any extra dollars either. The one thing that I thought, their administrative costs are very hard to understand, and somehow they throw transportation into that. And transportation is a huge number, and I don't really know how many of our kids use that transportation, and I don't know how many of all of those kids use it. My daughter, when she went there, she didn't use the transportation. So I would think that anything that's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars needs to be looked at, and why would you throw that into admin when you wouldn't even know that was admin? That didn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, no, it was definitely not flushed out thoroughly enough, because they were saying that, oh, we make several stops, so we can't really delineate. And it's like, you know what, you can.
Yeah.
It's just, it takes a little bit more time, so...
So you have a lot of work ahead of you, I'm thankful that you're doing this, and we want to hear what you hear from everybody else tomorrow night when they all kind of weigh in on it. And what I would say is that, in a nutshell, the people that run SCROCK are educators. They have been pushed to be business people. That is not what they do. And that is why you have this giant disconnect, right? They don't generally run businesses, and now they have to run a business to stay in business. So that is why some of this seems so complicated and actually very simple at the same time. So hopefully...
Good insight, thank you.
You'll, yeah, see what everyone has to say tomorrow night.
Thank you.
And we'll have this on our next agenda, so you can let us know what...
Okay, so then we have N, Report of the Superintendent, Recognition of PvPUSD's First Transition to Work Employee.
Okay, thank you. So President Seymour, members of the Board of Education, the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District's Transition to Work, TTW, program was designed to provide integrated support employment opportunities for students who have completed the district's Adult Transition Program and to create opportunities for employment within our district. One of our former Adult Transition students, Colin Schneider, was recently hired as an Assistant to the Student Services Office Staff. Colin started his new position January 14th and has been a pleasure to work with. He alphabetizes, hole punches, sorts incoming documents. He comes into the office two days a week in the morning and works for six hours a week. It's been a great opportunity to observe how the skills he learned in the Adult Transition Program and his former teachers here, Tara as well, has translated to this employment opportunity. We're so excited to have Colin and his family here tonight, and we wanted to ask Colin to say a few words, if you would.
My name is Colin Schneider, and I would like to thank Dr. Chernus, Emiko Chapman, and everyone at the Palos Verdes Peninsula School District for my new job here. Emiko Chapman is a very nice boss, and she helps me learn new skills every day. I do filing and organizing of school district files, and I am looking forward to learning new tasks in the future. Every day is a challenge, and I like that. I am happy in my new job, and I will continue to work hard and learn as much as possible. Being new people is also a great part of my job. Thank you for inviting me to speak here today.
Thank you, Colin. Thank you very much, Colin.
I'd like to also thank again his family for coming tonight. Colin, you are a valuable member to our team, and the first of hopefully many more employees that we hire from our TTI program, so thank you very much and congratulations on your new job.
Okay, so now we have, oh, let me go to the person that came earlier. So earlier, someone had said they wanted to speak on an unagendized item, and we're having trouble getting here on time. So let me take that card now. So this is Alicia Johnston. Elisha? Elisha Johnston, sorry.
Dear Miss President and members of the Board of Education, Councilman Cow of the Palos Verdes Estates Municipal Government recommended I come speak to you about the Los Angeles County Science and Engineering Fair, known for short as LACSEF. This is one of the longest-running and largest science fairs in the United States. LACSEF is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization. Over the years, LACSEF has provided a forum in which top Los Angeles science students compete for recognition as award-winning young scientists and engineers. LACSEF incentivizes students to develop real-world problem-solving skills and thus position us to more effectively help our communities. LACSEF stimulates students to improve our ability to converse about our solutions for community problems. LACSEF motivates students to develop relationships with people beyond our own group of friends. LACSEF has been a highlight in my life, as in the life of many other PV students. For these reasons and many more, I'm contributing to an effort that helps to increase participation of high school students in LACSEF. But there is a greater problem at this moment. LACSEF is experiencing a severe budgetary problem. For this reason, I came here tonight to inquire about guidance. To whom may I engage with the request that the Board of Education consider becoming a LACSEF sponsor?
You weren't here earlier when we said that when we do public comment on unagendized items, that we're not going to engage in a conversation with you. So I don't want you to think we're ignoring you, but since you are speaking on a topic that we did not agendize, we can't have an interaction with you, but we will follow up with you afterwards.
I can direct that to Dr. Chernus, can I not?
Yes, we will be sure to follow up with you to get you a point of contact, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, all we have on the card is your name and phone number, I mean, your name and your city, so if you want to make sure Jenna has your contact info, that'd be great. Okay? Okay. We are now on to O1, Presentation on Student Mental Health and Support Services. Dr. Ramirez.
Oh, yes, thank you, President Seymour, members of the Board, Executive Cabinet and community members. I'd like to invite Dr. Trista Ramirez, our Coordinator of Mental Health and Student Services, to come to the podium to present on the work that we're doing with student mental health and supports. So she has a great presentation for us tonight, and we will get started shortly.
I'll go ahead and get started. Oh, okay, perfect, all right. Thank you this evening for having me. Good evening, Dr. Chernus, Board President Seymour, members of the School Board and Executive Cabinet. I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the work that we've been doing regarding student mental health. regarding student mental health, social-emotional support. It's been a whirlwind of a new position for me here at the district office, and I'm excited to be able to share the work with you that we've been doing this year. Yep. If I can next it. Trying to figure it, okay. So during my work this year as the Coordinator of Student Mental Health, we have been doing a lot of work surrounding a multi-tiered system of supports for our students in the area of social-emotional health. What that really looks like is a tiered system of supports, where our students have universal supports as a tier one. Tier one supports would be something that would be available to all of our kids in our social-emotional curriculums. Tier two would be more targeted supports for our students that we've identified need additional assistance routed in, because perhaps they're struggling with something that's going on for them that's not allowing them to access their curriculum based on a social-emotional health issue. And then tier three would really be our crisis intervention, our kids who are experiencing at the moment some type of crisis that's really impacting them, and us needing to route in additional support for those students. Our goal with these multi-tiered systems of support are really providing established resources and strategies for our kids, practices that are consistent across our campuses. We're really wanting to make sure that at all times our social-emotional learning curriculums, our health, mental health approaches are always about the fact that we wanna make sure our kids have access to teaching and learning in the classroom. And when our kids are being impacted by mental health issues, they can sometimes struggle being able to access their curriculum. And a big piece of the puzzle, too, is re-engaging our kids that, for whatever reason, have become disconnected on the campus because of a social-emotional issue. So this piece right here is our budget in terms of what we're looking at for mental health programming across PVPUSD. We're looking at things that provide prevention, education, and intervention. We're looking at the promotion of physical and emotional well-being, with our overall goal of student connectedness for our kids. We heard Dr. Chernus at the state of the district address, talk about the importance of student connectedness, and really our mental health programs, that's really our underlying goal with what we're doing. So when you're looking at this, what this slide really tells me is that, as a district, we've committed quite a bit of resources to making sure that we are addressing our students as whole child approach in our mental health programs, both in and out of the classroom. I periodically watch the board meetings from home, live stream, so I am also one of those people tuning in. And at a recent board meeting, one of our SROs, Officer Lopes, was here talking about how school resource officers are actually, part of their work is connecting with kids on campus, and you'll see in my next presentation that a big piece of school connectedness is physical safety, along with emotional safety for kids. So in working with Dr. Gattanda, looking at our budget here, we did put school resource officers on here, because they do play a critical role in making sure that our kids also feel connected to all adults on campus. So as maybe silly as this may sound, I really do believe that all of our folks on the front lines on our campuses, our classified staff, our playground supervisors, all of those folks are working with us to provide the support our kids need to make sure they're mentally and emotionally healthy. So I wish I could put everybody up here, 'cause the reality is, I think, as a community, we rely on everybody to provide that frontline service for our kids. So a big, a big piece of my work this year is making sure that the work that we're doing is really data-driven. I think sometimes with mental health issues, it's hard for us to look at that as a data-driven decision. But I do think it's important, when we're talking about this, that we're looking at, when we're designing program and we're talking about the services our kids need, we're making sure that that's not just a gut reaction or an anecdotal type of data piece, but really data that we can get from our folks on the frontline, but also surveys that our kids take. So the California Healthy Kids Survey is actually administered in this district yearly to our students in grades seven, nine, and eleven, and every other year for our elementary school folks. So we actually, Dr. Gattanda made the decision, which I actually thought was an excellent choice, to move our administration of the California Healthy Kids Survey data to earlier. In the past, in my experience, we were giving that survey in April, and often didn't get the results until the middle of the summer. And so we weren't able to use that data to make programmatic decisions for the following year, because our planning had already started. So by having this administered in the fall, we already have our data back for the 2019-2020 school year, and so we're gonna review some of that tonight. So a lot of the folks across the district have heard me talk quite a bit this year about school connectedness and the importance of school connectedness for our kids. I truly believe, and you'll hear me talk about this in my next presentation, that school connectedness is a protective factor, is something that we, as a school, can truly foster for our kids. So school connectedness is one of the key indicators of social-emotional health in the California Healthy Kids Survey. This key indicator, the percentages up there, come from the average of the five questions that you see. Students are answering in grades five, seven, nine, and eleven. The questions are very similar, too. I feel close to the people at this school. I'm happy to be at my school. I feel like I'm part of the school. The teachers at school treat students fairly, and I feel safe at my school. The data here is students who are responding to this. In, I wanna make sure I get this correct for you guys. In seven, nine, and eleven, it's agree and strongly agree. In fifth grade, it's actually the language is all of the time or most of the time. So that's the same questions, but they've changed the language to make it a little bit more grade-level appropriate. Prior to the 1920 data, so our fifth-grade data, you can see, we only do it every other year, 'cause that's when we are giving that to our kids. In seventeen, eighteen, in the school safety plans that you folks have, we do have some connectedness data in there. Prior to this last year, this key indicator for elementary school, they were only giving it, the key indicator number was actually for kids who only reported all of the time. So you'll see some difference in that number there, because, so I went in, there's some ways to get different data now, so that we can have better comparison data. So I added those, that comparison data here for you, so that the 1920 data and the past data is equal in terms of what you're looking at for percentages. So I hope that makes sense to everybody, okay? The next key indicator is caring adult relationships. So again, kids are asked three questions. The responses to those questions are averaged together, and that's giving us our key indicator of overall adult caring, adult relationships on campus. So at school, there is a teacher or some other adult who really cares about me, notices when I'm not present at school, and who listens when I have something to say. Again, your key indicators in seven, nine, and eleven are most of the time or all of the time, and, I'm sorry, strongly agree or agree, and in fifth grade, it would be all of the time or most of the time. So those are where those key indicators are coming from for those questions. The next questions are elementary kids follow-away on the next questions we're gonna cover, but substance use is something that is covered and something that is in my role, I'm working with our school campuses on dealing with. And so this question, students in seventh grade, seven, nine, and eleven are asked if they've used drugs or alcohol on one or more days in the past thirty days. So you can see this data and the trends that have happened for our students over the past three years. Clearly, increases are happening as kids go through high school throughout the time, but kind of has stayed pretty consistent in terms of what those have looked like over the last three years for us. The next data piece we have is, that I've spent a lot of time on, our 2B grant, which is our Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant, is a lot of it now is focused on vaping, electronic cigarette use and vaping. So students were asked in grades seven, nine, or eleven if they had used, the old language was "an electronic cigarette." They have now switched that language to be more with what kids are talking, what language kids are using, which is vaping, in the past thirty days. I did think it was really interesting, we saw a pretty, I think, a significant decline in grade eleven this year. I wanna remind you that our kids did take this, this survey pretty early in the year, and so it wasn't when, you know, November, December, where there was a lot of talk happening in the news about deaths around vaping and the dangers of that. This was actually before that. So, you know, I think that the timing of that is interesting. That was early fall, before we started doing a lot of push on our campuses with some of that. So we did see a pretty good decline there, and we had been pushing out a lot of education around vaping. And so I think this, for me, goes to shows that with prevention and education for kids, we can really make an impact on the choices that they're making. Next question is sleep pattern. There is no previous data for this point, for this data point on this, because it's a new question. So we have not, we have not taken a survey with this question in here before, which is why you only have data for this current 1920 California Healthy Kids Survey. So kids were asked in fifth grade, what time they go to bed, if they have a bedtime after ten o'clock. Sixteen percent of our fifth graders are saying they have a bedtime after ten o'clock, which is pretty late. I have a sixth grader at home, she has to go to bed long before that. And then I think probably clearly that the concerning one is our eleventh graders, who are eighty-eight percent, are getting less than eight hours of sleep, seventy percent for our ninth graders. I think all of us know how critical sleep is in terms of kids being able to be available in the classroom. It helps with you being able to regulate your emotions and make good decisions and all of those things. So I definitely, this for me, I think, in digging into this data and really looking at what that looks like, again, going back to those education pieces and talking with our parents and our kids with this data piece, and what we can do to start addressing that sleep pattern for our kids, because sleep deprivation, I think, is gonna clearly impact kids' ability to learn in the classroom. And then our last data piece here is feelings of hopelessness and sadness. Our kids were asked in seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade if they had, were sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in the last year. So in this data point here, you can see we've seen some consistent increases in our data around this concept for our kids. I did dig into some data that's available for our other neighboring school districts in the area to see kind of where we land compared to those districts. Nineteen twenty data isn't public yet, so I don't have access to what their current data looks like, but I can tell you from the data that typically in most districts, what's available right now is eighteen, nineteen data around this. We really are in alignment with our districts, our neighboring districts around here who participate in the California Healthy Kids Survey when it comes to this data piece. Their eleventh grade numbers are anywhere between thirty-five and forty-four percent for last year. Ninth grade numbers are around twenty-five to thirty-one percent, and seventh grade numbers are in the range of twenty-two to twenty-seven. So we are really kind of aligned with all of our neighboring districts who are also involved in the California Healthy Kids Survey data with the data that's currently available that I could look at for comparison. So based on all of this data, I'm gonna kind of highlight for you some of the work that I've been doing now in relationship to using this data in all of the areas that I oversee through the Educational Services Office. Counseling programs has been a big part of what I've been digging into, what are we looking at? And for me, counseling programs is looking at all of our service providers, so our school counselors, our student support specialists, our school psychologists. Where are their, what are their job roles, their responsibilities? How do those overlap? I think a big piece of the puzzle for me is making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our kids, and that we're not duplicating services. There are moments in the middle of a crisis where we need all hands on deck, so we are gonna have a lot of people focused on one child. But I think wanting to make sure that we have people who are using this tiered model of support to make sure that we're all functioning in the role and the place where we're supposed to be, based on the services and the training that each individual has. So our intermediate schools and high schools have been working a lot on program alignment, and I've been helping their teams look at their guidance lessons, which would be the type of information all of our kids are getting. Were you looking at using data to determine who our kids are that need tier-two support? And then working together as a team for crisis intervention, because the reality is, when a kid is in crisis, we have to have all hands on deck in that moment. So I've been doing a lot of work surrounding our counseling programs. I'm actually going tomorrow with all of our six-twelve associate assistant principals to National Counseling Conference, where they are going to be learning more about their role in this tiered system of support for our kids. So this data piece here for you shows just a piece of the puzzle of the work that our school counselors and our school psychologists do. Social-emotional health and support is just one piece of their jobs, and their roles are really vast in what they're doing with academic planning and college and career planning, but that social-emotional health piece is something that they're really engaged in. So this shows for you, the graph on my left, is service information, the type of service that the students would have been getting, and the total number of interactions during the first semester that that happened. So we had seventeen hundred and six total interactions when it comes to personal social counseling, coming out of our counseling departments in the first semester. This year, all of our intermediate school counselors started working on making sure that every one of our intermediate school students was called into the office for a grade-level check-in. The goal and the purpose of that is, again, that school connectedness piece, really trying to normalize for our kids that seeing your school counselor isn't a bad thing. They're there to help you and support you through a variety of things during your life, and really wanting to make sure that we're building those relationships early on with our kids. So that's what that data number is there. Crisis intervention, we had a hundred and ninety-seven interactions with some kind of crisis on our campus, and then six hundred and nineteen SST meetings, or School Attendance Review Team meetings, attended by our counselors or psychologists. In our, this year, we were able to increase some, the time of our school psychologists on our elementary school campuses, so I did take the time to go meet with every one of them, to talk with the school psychologists about how they're looking at enhancing their services for our general education students when it comes to social-emotional support. This is in addition to all the other great work that they were already doing with our students on campus. So they've done things like, in our K8 programs, like starting additional group counseling things for grief groups, friendship groups. We're doing a lot of tier-two PBIS intervention with our program there. They're also helping with the delivery of our social-emotional learning curriculum. We have some new game rooms at our elementary schools for kids who are maybe struggling with some social skills, and our counselors are really involved with our student leadership development, like our web program at our intermediate schools, and really just staying active and involved in different programming beyond just what they're doing in their office to continue to work on that student connectedness piece. Our work with Sage, which is our student support specialist, I just wanted to highlight some additional work that I've been doing with them this year. We actually started a monthly parent support group this year. Liz Chobin, who's the Director of Sage, is running that parent support group for me. It meets monthly here in the district in the boardroom, and she has typically about ten to fifteen parents that are attending that, and it's just an opportunity for them to work together collaboratively, talk about things that are worrying them, and just get support from her, and, you know, talk through things and from one another. We also started doing some counseling services here at the district office with one of our student support specialists for some of our students who are on our home hospital program or in independent study, making sure that they're having an opportunity to get additional support while they're working through whatever is going on for them. And then our Sage folks are continuing to help us with our education pieces and our prevention pieces when it comes to our suicide prevention education and our district implementation of parent education. This data piece here shows you the service types for our student support specialists at our intermediate schools and our high schools. Just as a reminder, on our intermediate campuses, we do have a student support specialist on each campus for two days a week, and at Rantall Del Mar for two days a week. At our high school, we have two full-time people on campus five days a week. And so you can see the numbers there in terms of the interactions with staff consultations, parent consultations, the number of hours in crisis consultation, the number of sessions that were held, so that's the number of times that they've met with kids, and the individual students that they've supported through their work. And that was for the first semester of this year. Other thing I've been working on this year is social-emotional learning curriculum. So we have worked with our elementary school folks to look at including some digital citizenship in our upper elementary grades, so they're involving some common sense media lessons in their already established social-emotional learning curriculum. I'm kind of excited to say that we'd been doing second step for the third year in our K8 schools, but this year, we added the second semester, second-step program in our preschool. So we even have our youngest little learners in our PVPUSD program, learning about social skills success in our preschool program. And I've been working with our intermediate school counselors, making sure that our lessons for our SEL in that level are aligned across all three schools, so that all kids are getting the same content. And this year, we're focusing on decision-making, emotional regulation, and healthy relationships. Positive behavior intervention supports. So our PBIS teams are in, either they're second or third year of implementation. We have been working We have been working here at the district office with Jessica Hannigan, who wrote the PBIS tier one and tier two handbooks. And she's been working with myself and our teams to really refine our tier one behavior supports for all students. Really making sure that we're taking, again, data-driven decisions about behavior and then developing our tier two interventions for our identified kids. We have all kinds of tier two interventions that are happening from check-in checkout systems on campuses to additional group counseling and just making sure that our kids are being supported in their behavioral decisions. Finally, with the, I've been working in conjunction with the PEF and PvP Council of PTAs on our parent education. We've already had two parent nights this year, our vaping panel and our When to Worry series. And in April, we will be having a parent night on social media and the impact on student mental health. I'm excited to say we have some students who will actually be on our panel who did some research on the impact of social media in their science research program. So I invited those students to be on our panel and to work with us and be part of our, our engagement. Because I do think student voice is a big piece that we want to make sure we're listening to and how things are going. President Seymour talked about our symposium that's coming up in March. Been working alongside PEF and PvP Council of PTAs. We have Torrance Memorial and Providence Little Company of Mary who are supporting our wellness programs for our students. So they are going to be presenting and participating. Dr. Foxman from USC is going to be doing our presentation for our keynote speaker on a model for mental thriving. He's going to be giving parents tools to help support their kids and making sure that they are mentally fit to achieve whatever they're looking to do. And then from there, parents will have choices for breakout sessions from a variety of topics our own counselors are presenting, our student support specialists, and a variety of doctors and local therapists and, and community members are going to be giving presentations. I know you're hoping I'm going to be done soon, I told you, sorry. It's a lot of content. Suicide prevention education, as you may remember, Assembly Bill twenty-two forty-six does require that we provide suicide prevention education to all of our students, grades seven through twelve. So our counselors and student support specialists have been working on that throughout this year, going in and giving grade level appropriate, age-appropriate presentations on suicide prevention education. And out of there, we do look at being able to make sure that we're identifying kids who need support and then routing in support for those kids after those presentations. We've also had all of our certified and classified staff at all grade levels provided training. And then our parent presentation was given by Liz Chauvin, Chauvin in December. And we also got a new grant this year to help us update our suicide prevention education information. So myself and a few of our counselors attended that training. So we are part of the Los Angeles County Youth Suicide Prevention Project. And there actually is a new bill that was just passed that actually extends our suicide prevention education into elementary school. So I will be working with some of our school psychologists to attend a training on that so that we can be ready to roll that out for next school year. Professional development and training, making sure that we are, I think, training our staff that's on the front line is a big piece. Clearly, our teachers and our, our classified staff and our counselors, those folks are seeing our kids on a daily basis. And they're going to be the first people that are going to be able to help us recognize who needs help and, and kids that maybe are experiencing some, some crisis in their life. So I've done presentations for our classified staff, our administrators, targeted groups of folks. I've done PTA meetings and gone out and talked to teachers and school site teams. So I think just making sure that people understand what services we have available, warning signs to be looking for, and how to even support our kids through this process. And then finally, a big piece of my work has been school team consultation. And so this gives you an idea of some of the school team consultations that I've done since I started from August to January. I've done consultation on a hundred, for a hundred and seven cases on mental health, seventy-two risk assessments for moderate to high-risk assessments, forty-six consultations on Department of Children and Family Services. So DCFS reporting, helping walk our folks through that. Discipline consultation and, and then attendance consultation. So I really believe that it's my role to help our teams be able to find brainstorming solutions. What can we do to best serve the needs of our kids? And how can I help them look at what some options are for intervention? And so really being available to them regardless of the time. As Dr. Gattanda knows, my phone is always open to my principal friends, even at the late evening. So I think being able to be there to help them walk through what they need to do. And this really has given me an opportunity to see what the needs are on our campuses K twelve, to be able to inform decision-making, look at planning and programming, and really seeing how all of our mental health providers fall into the different roles in supporting our kids. And last, I promise, until the next presentation, in terms of continued efforts, these are the things that I'm looking at in terms of where I'd like to continue my focus, our K twelve counseling programs. And for me, that's working with our elementary school psychologists, our student support specialists, and our school counselors to make sure we're refining our tier one program. What are we giving in terms of our best first instruction when it comes to our student mental health? How are we increasing early identification for our tier two kids and using data to be able to do that? I think that's the place where I really want to see us put some emphasis moving forward. How are we identifying kids earlier to make sure that we're giving them the support they need before they reach our tier three crisis area? And really looking at our crisis team, what that looks like, the structure and the protocols and the supports. And we, I believe we do a great job in routing in our crisis team, but I think maybe coming together more often and sharing best practices with our school teams is a good thing to do. And I'd like to explore the idea of a counseling intern program for our elementary schools. That's kind of a pie in the sky thing for me to want to look at. But I do believe that being able to provide counseling in our elementary schools is, is a key to that early preventative education. So maybe through some type of an intern program. And then continue with the data-driven decision-making, increased focusness on school connectedness. And you'll see in my next presentation why I feel that got so important. And school avoidance and the impact on attendance. To me, I think we're seeing a lot of school avoidance in our kids and kids that aren't coming to school. For a variety of mental health reasons, it's impacting their ability to, to really access curriculum in the, in the classroom. And how do we support that? And then that sleep deprivation piece, I think, is key. And continuing our education for all of our stakeholders. And so this is really a group effort. It's, it takes a village to raise a kid. And in this case, it takes a village to raise eleven thousand of them. So. And that's it for this one.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, don't go anywhere. So what's interesting, honestly, is that we've had bits and pieces of this, you know, in the past. And really, this is your first year of you trying to pull the whole thing together and make it make more sense for us. And I'm sure many people don't know, but we really have added lots of dollars in this area. And so I'm glad to hear, you know, even though that was very comprehensive, I was happy to hear all those slides, to hear all that's going on. Because this piece helps us with all of our student achievement. So if kids aren't here, and they're not really here, they're not going to get it, right? So this has to be something that we don't let go, that we keep adding to. And, and it's been hard to find the money and to piece together a more, you know, robust program, for sure. So I appreciate all of your effort and I look forward to even hearing what you have, what you want to say that you would change for next year. So that moving on, you would, I'm sure, have some, besides you said adding more counseling at the elementary level. So let me open it up to my fellow board members. If anybody has any comments or questions, why don't you let me in?
I'll go. Um, okay, so a couple of things going back to that, I might have missed it. But going back to the cost page. Um, the PvPUSD crisis response team, why is that zero dollars again?
Because it's just me and Lindsay and Emiko, if she's still here.
Um.
We already paid him for another job.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We, we, we are the crisis response team at ten o'clock at night.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Uh, second question is, and this is where I was going back to the comprehensive school safety plans and comparing. That's why I was like, wait, what are these numbers? So again.
Does that make sense now, the way I explained it?
Just so, just so that I'm clear again.
Yes.
The comprehensive school safety plans, when it talks about the school connectedness and caring adult relationships, those percentages were for all of the time?
All of the time, because back in seventeen eighteen, when those comprehensive schools, so our California Healthy Kids Survey data just came in. So the nineteen twenty data just was released to us. So when those school safety plans were written, the only data we had was the seventeen eighteen data. And the data that's reflected there is the way you, the indicator used to be written, which is all of the time. They have now switched it so that it's all of the time and most of the time. So that's the nineteen twenty data. So what's in the seventeen eighteen data for the school safety plans is all of the time.
And, and what about this again?
Those, I adjusted all of those so that they're all the same. They're all, all of the time and most of the time. Does that make sense?
That's why these are higher.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there is a, in the California Healthy Kids Survey, there's actually a way to look at trends over time that put the data together in seventeen eighteen the way the indicator does not in the school report.
Okay. So, and they are, I mean, the percentages, they are relatively close. And again, this is volunteer survey, right? So generally, do you think over the years, have we gotten the same percentage of response from students? Has it gone up or down?
Been very consistent.
At what percent ish?
This year, we were at.
Hold on, I have that. No, sorry, I was just.
No, no, no. I have it. This year, our response rate was seventy-six percent for eleventh grade, seventy-three percent for ninth grade, ninety-one for seventh grade, and sixty for fifth grade.
Okay. And again, the percentages are pretty close, but it seems like it's slightly going down. It's still like, I don't know, it's still kind of depressing to me. Do you have any idea why? Why it may be going down or staying at, I consider these kind of lower numbers? Do you have any idea why that might be? For like school connectedness, I guess?
A reason why it's going down? You know, to be honest with you, I've, I've looked at the other schools and we're in line kind of with where their trends are kind of leaning towards too. I don't really have a reason to give you as to why it's looking like that. But I can tell you that like looking at the trends over time in other districts, they've seen kind of the same kind of trends down in that school connectedness area. Go ahead.
If I can jump in, at the, our state of the district event, we talked about school connectedness. And we really do want a goal to have a hundred percent connectedness. And so we will be talking about different initiatives that we can try to do. Because right now, we don't have any district-wide initiative. Every school is trying to tackle it a different way. And we're not, while it may be, you know, within the averages, it's still not good enough.
That's not good enough.
And we need to, we need to improve in that area. So next steps for us is to, to, to try to determine and work with our principals ways to improve it.
And that's, I mean, obviously, I feel like that's going to be correlated with other things too. Like in the feelings of so hopelessness and sadness, that data is really depressing. And I know you said it's kind of in line with other districts. But I mean, to have like forty-two percent of eleventh graders feeling sad or hopeless for two weeks or more. You know, and even like our younger kids, it's, to me, it just is frustrating, I guess, society in general. And like, you know, what can we do as a school and district to help these kids? And I'm glad that, you know, we are getting parents involved and educated and, you know, getting to the root of the causes why they're feeling that way, which I know that we're doing. It's just, you know, I hope, I hope that with the things that we're, that we're doing that we start to see those numbers go down. So I appreciate, you know, everything that you're doing. And I hope that moving forward, just continuing that, that we can really try to help those students. And like you said, kind of expanding on those tier one interventions so that we can really help all students. So it's also interesting about the preschool, you talking about that with second step. So I think that's great. But yeah, I'm just, my main thing is like, the concerning part about, about the school connectedness and the sad and hopeless. So I hope that with the things that we're doing, that that can, you know, improve.
I think the sadness is a hopelessness, a lot of that kind of the anxiety and depression is so nuanced. I think it's hard to sometimes pinpoint exactly what's going on. But I do think with the school connectedness piece, making sure kids understand like how to reach out to adults. What does that look like? Who are the people you can go to? And some of the things we've talked about too is kind of being more explicit with kids about the language we're using when we're talking about school connectedness, when we're talking about building relationships. I think sometimes we make assumptions that kids understand the things we're talking about. So I've talked with the counselors about being more explicit when they're doing their guidance lessons. So what are we, what are we saying when we're talking about who's here to help you and how you access support services and things like that? I think being more explicit with kids is important.
And having them feel comfortable to be able to reach out and ask for help.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I agreed with Dr. Turner's that our goal should be one hundred percent connectedness. And every student should feel noticed if they were absent. I, just that, that breaks my heart to think that a student would walk to school and go, well, nobody cares if I'm here or not. And that, and I know it's not true, I know our teachers care. It's just how do we make sure that student understands how much we care? And so the, I was curious, you know, we're talking about the connectedness dropping. And I was wondering if that was perhaps because we started earlier this year compared to later years and they hadn't built up that relationship on campus. So I'd be interested to see next year if that trend continues. So I'm kind of willing to give a little bit of wiggle this year, but definitely want to see that improved by next year. Would you please look at programs that other places have done regarding sleep and programs that they've done that we can implement? I mean, we're trying to tackle the homework policy, trying to decrease the amount of homework that our students are given to, to allow more sleep time. But if they are using that time to now text their friends or play video games, it's, it doesn't solve all of the problems. So I'm, would hope that you guys are looking, and I'm sure you are. You're looking at programs that have been done that are successful in promoting positive sleep behavior. I mean, when I was a kid, right, it was like, you know, it's ten o'clock, do you know where your kids are? Right? It should be, you know, it's nine o'clock, are, are your fifth graders in bed? Right? And it's part of parent education. And, you know, when parents are working so late and they want to spend all that extra time that they have at home with their kids, not realizing that that's actually more damaging than letting their child go to sleep and waking them up early and playing with them in the morning. Identification, I would really like to see a little bit more focus on identification of students who are, are starting to struggle. And I think that we can really look at absences. We have the, the software and the technology that can identify trends and patterns, right? So if we have students who are all of a sudden starting to, we should be able to plot that data out. It seemed like you're pretty data-intensive. But I think that would be a good way for us to start identifying early. Last thing would simply be that when we have forty percent of our students who are feeling hopeless or depressed, again, that's a normalizing behavior. And it just, it's going to feed on its, on itself. When you have half of the students around you feeling the same way, who are you gaining and drawing your support from? So we need to break that cycle and we need to break it fast. The board's doing what we can with, with homework and, you know, the programs that you're implementing. But that is something that it's reaching, it's already a problem and it's reaching a crisis. Thank you.
I kind of had two comments and two questions, if that's okay. I have a couple of shout-outs. Our middle school counselors for checking in with each student, that is so important. So please thank them for that. I'd love to hear some feedback on how that went. Because I think there are a lot of middle schoolers, especially sixth graders, who probably have no clue and are scared to death. And so I, I really think that that's such a no-brainer thing to do. And so I appreciate you implementing that. And in terms of connectedness to all of the people at the high school and middle school level who work with our kids in activities, whether it's a sport, dance, drama, Model UN, debate, whatever it is. Because that's where a lot of the connectedness can happen. Or they could be in Project Runway's fashion show, whatever it is. There are so many things like that, that, and adults in different areas of campus with our classified employees or teachers or whatever. So I appreciate that very much. So I have two questions. The first one is the elementary counseling intern, the way we, it was explained to us as a board, and this is historically, is number one, that we didn't like interns because they weren't consistent on campuses. And two, that parents wouldn't often, at the elementary level, give permission for their children to talk with counselors for a variety of cultural and personal reasons. And so that that's been a stumbling block to us. So is there a different way to look at it? Either presenting it to parents a different way or schools a different way? Either presenting it to parents a different way or schools a different way? And that's, you know, over the last four or five years, that's kind of how it's been explained to us, as far as a problem that we have without a solution.
I think a couple of things. So when we talk about interns, I think we want to really look at students who are currently in a counseling program. And Dr. Ramirez and I and Ms. Chapman are thinking about ways that we could oversee the interns also, because we also have our PPS credentials, so we would be able to have some oversight of those interns. Granted, we would only get them for the year or the amount of hours that they have to do. So school counseling interns have to complete a thousand total hours right now, and they have to do no more than like six hundred at one level. So if they did six hundred at elementary, we would have them for that six hundred hours. One of the challenges is to have them get permission, just because they are so young that they need to have permission, but our thought was that we can have them do a lot of the tier one universal thing. So whether that's a lunch bunch, whether that's doing some of the classroom guidance lessons, looking for ways that we can help alleviate some of that burden on the elementary teacher.
Because the teachers are doing it all right now.
Right. I think that would be probably much appreciated by our staff and then also would be a great way for us to get out more information to our students.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And then Lucy, I was looking at you and we were looking at the data and you were kind of like, huh. So I'm curious, what, did something strike you as unusual with the data, or did that fit what you think in terms of this amount of kids are drinking all the time, this amount of kids are vaping, these kids are not sleeping? Like, did it, did it kind of align to you with what you see your friends, not necessarily you specifically, but just kind of what your friends and classmates and and students in general?
I think it aligned pretty much with what I expected.
The sleep one, you were kind of like, oh.
Yeah, the sleep one was high, but then I thought about it and I don't find it that surprising. Eight hours is a lot of sleep. I can't remember the last time I got eight hours on a school night, but.
I kind of want you to go home right now and go to sleep.
Well, can you go home right now? Get in bed by nine. But I think that has a lot to do with like, students' personal habits. So, I mean, take it with a grain of salt, but.
And if you have any other thoughts about anything, please.
Yeah, I like the idea of more like teacher training, because our school has so many resources, like the Wellness Center and the onsite specialists, but I think a lack of personal connection with them might bar students from going and looking into that option. So I think having a level of maybe like teacher intervention would make it a more reasonable option for students to look into. And also, I think just student awareness overall. I think because it's such a big issue and so many students feel stressed or anxious or maybe a little bit depressed about something, and you talk about it with other students and you kind of become a little bit numb to it, like, oh, it's so commonplace, it's maybe not even an issue. So why would I look in to like, getting some support from my school if everybody's feeling the same way? It's like, not a problem. And so I think really educating students that even though it's common, it doesn't mean that it's not something that should be addressed, and encouraging them to use those resources, because we have so many great opportunities for students to reach out to things on campus, so.
Lucy, do you have any suggestions for us on related to sleep deprivation? I mean, I know eighty-eight percent is just, it's such a huge number that, like you said, everyone's probably numb to the issue.
Yeah.
But did, have your, you or your friends ever discussed it or ways to, we could help?
I, I mean, I think a component of it is homework. Like, last year, I had a teacher where she didn't give us any homework. Her homework was that we got an additional hour of sleep. And that's not really an approach that all classes can take, because sometimes you need that additional homework. But I think it has to do with kind of encouraging students to develop healthier study habits at home, and that really comes up to them to like, form their own habit.
Kind of just like, put your phone away for an hour, that, like, that type of self-discipline?
Yeah, I just think, yeah, it's self-discipline. I think that there are just so many ways for you to entertain yourself and get distracted from prioritizing your studying. And so then it's just like, okay, I'm not going to go to bed until two in the morning or something like that. So it's habits of students, but.
That's it. Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
You're welcome.
Let me stick with that, Lucy, and feel free to jump in, but I do think that the most alarming statistic is really the forty-two percent kind of hopelessness and that the trend line is wrong, right? You know, that just increases. So we started these Sage group kind of sessions on on the campuses. What would the Sage counselors tell us are the two things that we could do to, you know, get at what are the root causes of that feeling of hopelessness among the the eleventh graders in your peer groups?
Like, the main reasons why they're seeing kids? Actually, the data around that is a little bit different between the high schools. A lot of it's surrounding peer issues, family issues, but a lot of, some of it is anxiety around profession, like pressure to perform, kind of, how I'm doing in school, my grades. Those were kind of the top, but the piece of the puzzle, they, when they classify it as, I mean, I have anxiety about something, about what? You know, so I mean, they're seeing a kid for anxiety, but I think digging into what those issues look like and what those are for, you know, that's data that I can ask Liz to have her folks kind of, kind of dig more in and kind of track for us in terms of specifying out when a kid is coming in for anxiety or depression, what does that really look like in terms of like, the impetus for all of that, as opposed to just that category? I think we often are labeling things without looking at the the underlying causes. So I can definitely ask her if they can look into tracking data that way for us too, in terms of underlying root causes, more than just peer relationships or family relationships, because I think those broad categories don't always give us a lot to go off of.
Right, and I think that that's the, kind of my, my overall problem with with this is, you know, as Suzanne's pointed out, we've kind of accumulated a pool of resources. We put five million dollars in from virtually zero, right? Call it five years ago. And this has been a big effort of ours to invest in mental health, but we haven't really moved the needle, right? Our indicators are all going kind of the same way. Vaping, good job, right? That's the one thing that we did a good job on last year in terms of the numbers showing that it went down. But everything else has kind of like, stayed the same or moved against us. And so the question is, how do we move that investment of five million dollars to make it the most effective to actually, you know, move in the needle? And figuring out the root causes there, I think, would be helpful.
I think a big piece of that is prevention education earlier on. And so I do think that when you're looking at the numbers that we have in terms of our data, you're looking at kids that are already sixteen and seventeen years old, who are kind of created sleep patterns and health patterns and social media patterns and all these other things. So I think for me, that kind of early intervention prevention education, I've, when I've met with, I met with every elementary school principal and I told all of them, I'm like, you're kind of outside of my wheelhouse. I've kind of spent my career in high school and middle school, but you are our bang for our buck, for lack of a better way to say it. And how do we get in there and really look at what's going on for our elementary school kids? And even our intermediate school kids.
Should we move resources from the high school level down to middle school? Seriously, because if that's, that's what's required.
Because I think at this point.
I know more resources is always a, you know, a good thing, but we've, we've tried to, we built up to this level over time, right? And so, given all of the demands on resources, and grants are great, and I saw that we got, you know, the Tube grant was a hundred grand, and that was impactful, so more grants we can apply for. But how do we best deploy those resources is really, really the key.
Well, and I think that a piece of that is looking at the fact, like, our social emotional learning curriculum is only in its second year in some places, some schools, it's a third year. You know, making sure that we have, like, those are the skills we're trying to teach our kids, so that when they do get to high school, they have coping skills that they can rely, you know, fall back on. They have established peer relationships, they know how to communicate successfully. So those things I think we are doing in our elementary schools now. So I think that hopefully we'll see some outcomes there when kids are moving forward through our system. I heard from our intermediate school counselors that this year, when they were doing their Second Step lessons, their sixth graders knew the language and knew what they were, what, what to expect when they were doing the lessons and kind of the words that are used through the program and what the expectations are. So I think that as that continues to move forward, we'll see more of that needle move for our kids with that kind of prevention education that's going on.
Okay, so, well, other than the fifth grade Healthy Kids Survey, that's really the first time. So if we watch fifth and seventh grade, you think we'll see an impact there?
I hope so. And and really, I mean, that fifth grade is the first point of of that kind of data that we have.
And then on the really bad side, both you and Lindsay are are the crisis response team. So what do you think are the two most impactful things we could do to, you know, reduce the level of crises from either one hundred and ninety-two by the Sage data or one hundred and seventeen to, you know, on your events, to to get that down by a significant chunk next year?
I think it's a hard one to to answer, only from the perspective of, there's a lot of different reasons why students go into crisis. There are some students who have underlying mental health concerns before something triggers it, and then sometimes students have big events that happen that then can can trigger. So I think that's a really hard one.
I would also wonder too, and please don't take this as the way that, I don't want to say we're over-identifying kids, but I do wonder if we are more in tune to what's going on with our kids and routing in support in a way that wasn't happening when I was a school counselor. I do think that we have become more aware, our teachers are more aware, we have more things going on in the front lines with our kids. I think there has been more education and prevention going on, and not that it's, we're trying to normalize that everybody's anxious or anything like that, but I do think that some increase in numbers sometimes is because we are being more, we're identifying more kids, which, for me, every kid that we can identify that's in crisis and we can route in support for is a kid that we were able to get help. And so while, yes, the numbers are high, from the perspective of me knowing, having been here for twenty years, maybe we weren't always identifying all the kids we needed to. And so for me, high numbers, while they're alarming, and yes, I would love to work to reduce them, I also want to keep, be cognizant of the fact that every kid that we are able to intervene for is a kid who's, hopefully, we're putting on a different path in their life.
So maybe one way to track that is for you guys, when you're doing the crisis response, to grade, right, by severity, right? That, you know, if we, if we are.
We do. We have them.
Maybe if you could, you know, circulate the data in terms of severity that that we're, you know, because we clearly need to stay out and reduce the the severe crises, that's really disastrous outcomes.
We can do that, but we do have that. So for every risk assessment that we do, there's a process that we refined a couple of years ago, so that way we can determine whether a student is low-risk, moderate, you know, high-risk, if they're eminent, then we have processes for all of those.
And I recognize from talking with you guys over the years that only a segment really are causes kind of within our control, because life happens to our kids.
Right.
And there's lots of things outside of the school environment that affect them. Okay, thanks.
So again, it's great that we can actually have this conversation, because we would not have been able to have this, we didn't even have a report like this, I don't think, ever since I've been on the board. So the only thing that I would say, Rick, is that we did always pay for academic counselors, and that's included, so that's a couple million dollars. But again, we have put in significant amounts of energy and money behind this, so we do want to see that it's useful. And I think that, for me, well, number one, it's one data point, really, so, and we're not even asking, I mean, in some cases, it's multiple, you know, the same kid, maybe multiple years, but I think it's hard to compare. So that's, you know, number one. Number two, when I was a younger parent and the schools offered different classes and stuff, I always went to them. And I always learned something. And then they would say, oh, you know, you get a point in PE, but you really aren't the kids, parents that really have a kid that needs a point in PE, but I'm glad you showed up, right? And it didn't matter, because I always learned something that I didn't know. And then I could share with my friends who didn't go, hey, you know what I learned? And honestly, some of the things I learned, and it's maybe a little embarrassing, people are going to think, you know, how am I so uninformed? But I, you know, there's no book to being a parent, right? So you're just trucking along, trying to figure out how to make things go, and I'm a pretty control freak type A person, so that isn't always a great parenting skill set for for some kids. So I really learned different ways to just come about my different kids different ways, right? One of the things I learned was that actually, and I learned this a long time ago, that our kids really expect to have fun every day, every day. They want to go to school and have fun every day, right? So I'm like, wow, I didn't, never thought about that. I'm like, get up, get your groceries, get your, get your breakfast, get your, I didn't really care about having fun, right? So it helped me kind of change my approach, and I really feel like that, you know, every time I took one of those classes and I learned a little thing like that, that didn't cost me money, I didn't have to go get therapy, I didn't have to do anything, I just had to kind of change my outlook, because I wasn't thinking about what it's like to be, you know, seven and nine and twelve with a ton of homework. So I, I don't, I know we still have these parenting things, and I know it's hard for people to go, but I, I think so much of all this is about helping our parents understand how it, what it means to be a good parent in your own way. And that, we just have to work on. We have to find people where they are and help them get these little lessons that don't have to take hours and hours, but that can impact, you know, lots of people in little small ways to make everyone get it. And the other part in here that costs us zero is helping people understand about sleep. So I don't think, first of all, I think asking eight hours is silly, because no one gets eight hours. Most adults don't get hours. I know that, I read these data that the whole nation, they do, I'm like, really? So what about six hours? What about seven hours? I mean, four and three is horrific, right? But five, six, well, five's bad too. But seven isn't as bad, right? So how many hours are our kids actually sleeping? And that's a, do you, do you know that? Oh, okay, okay. So if you, if you, if you mark it down to seven hours, do you get a lot more kids getting seven hours of sleep? No? Yes? Oh, you're looking, I'm sorry.
Particularly like the eleventh graders, I'm curious.
Yeah, the eighty-eight.
So if you look at seven hours of sleep, you're at twenty-four percent. So there's fourteen percent of eleventh graders are reporting they're getting four or less hours of sleep a night.
What? How many?
Fourteen percent.
Okay, so we need a parenting lesson, everyone is a parent, like, it's your responsibility to make sure your kids go to bed.
Yeah, twenty percent are reporting they're getting five hours. Twenty-nine, this is all eleventh grade, twenty-nine are reporting six hours, twenty-four, seven hours, and then from there, it's like, ten, two, and one, so.
Well, so this is fixable.
One percent's finding a way to get more than ten hours, so good for them, I don't know.
Wait, how many? How many get more than ten?
One percent.
Oh, one? I'm like, really?
Yeah. So, and then, I mean, ninth grade, the numbers are, you have about twenty-two percent in eighth grade, in eight hours, thirty-one in seven, and twenty-two in six.
So that's good, okay? So that's good that we have more information. And sleep and having our kids sleep more will cost us zero dollars, and guess what? Every other issue is going to be not as bad, right? So when you're so sleepy, of course you're depressed. You get up and you have five hours of sleep, you're depressed every day. That would be depressing for anybody. So this is, I mean, that would just be horrible, that'd be a horrible situation every single day, if, that's all you could look forward to, is five hours of sleep a night. So that is, so I, I'm going to have to challenge us to figure this out, because it doesn't cost anything extra. We have to do more pushing of kids and pushing of parents, so they understand. And I know it's tough with technology, because we think our kids are sleeping, but really they're not, because you can, you know, because if you're paying attention, you can hear the phone drop on the ground or whatever. But, you know, you, you, come on. So we, we just got to figure this out. If we could just get the sleep, everything else wouldn't be quite as bad. And that, that's obviously a no-brainer. The other thing I wanted to ask about is Apex, and how the Apex positive reinforcement lessons that they're doing at the elementary level for all these fundraisers, they have all these people doing all this positive stuff with our kids, doing these fundraisers. And you may not know about it, I can tell, that's fine. I need to understand, I keep reading about all this, and I don't understand how it fits in, and I know people like it because it's raising money, but I'm super concerned about the entire process, the whole thing, way it works, and if all those strangers are on our campus helping our kids, and of course, they're not always strangers, but you know, I mean, they're not our, they're not our teachers, they're just there for a fundraiser. So what are they doing and how does that impact all this? Because that's actually other resources that we're not even counting. So let's, you know, kind of get that figured out in this too. So you're going to have to come back with that, you know, the Apex thing later, and also the sleep thing later. sleep thing later. I'm going to start having our board meetings end by eight thirty, so all of us can get a full night's sleep. Look at their CCs going to be, give me a high five, yeah.
So when you're doing crisis, for lack of a better term, intake, are you documenting how much sleep on average those students are getting?
No, the process when we have a student in crisis is to just make sure that they're safe.
Right. But did you follow up afterwards with these students?
Sleep is not part of it. It could become part of if, when we do a reentry meeting. Depends on how severe it is. Sleep is not part of the conversation, just because.
I mean, I understand the first, that's not the first step, but I think, you know, we should be looking for all the data points that we can get on sleep. You know, whenever we have a kind of contact with a student with, whether it's in crises or, you know, one of the earlier tiers, but just to try and find out, you know, how related sleep and, and these, these problems truly are in our district.
Okay. So I think you've already moved right on to sophomore seminar.
She wants to go along.
I'm liking that. She wants to go and get sleep tonight, too. That's awesome. So we are now on to presentation of sophomore seminar.
And I'm back. Okay. So thank you again for having me. I'm excited to share with you tonight our team's progress from the first semester on sophomore seminar. So as you may remember, Dr. Chernus outlined at the State of the District in October, a new idea for us to explore, which was creating a seminar program for our high school students that would become a graduation requirement. And it was really supposed to be designed to make sure we're strengthening the social emotional learning of our high school students. We just spent the last, I don't know how long, talking about kind of those critical pieces of social emotional health. And, you know, as I discussed, we have our SEL, our second step curriculum in our K eight schools and now down to our preschools. And while we do have a variety of programming at our high schools, in terms of social emotional learning curriculum, that is not something that we currently have as a school-wide program. So we wanted to look at sophomore seminars as just an additional opportunity for us to provide our students, again, with that preventative education, that tier one instruction for all kids, universal support as it relates to their social emotional learning. So we've been talking a lot tonight about school connectedness. And I think our principals are a little tired of hearing me push school connectedness, but I think the reason why I think it is so important is school connectedness in terms of a protective factor. So when you're looking at protective factors for kids, school connectedness is actually number two, only to family. So kids who are connected in school as a protective factor see reduced use of substance, they have a decrease in school absenteeism, less emotional distress, disordered eating. So in all ways where we can find ways for our kids to be more connected on the school campus, that protective factor increases with help in these areas. So research does show that it, there are some critical components to school connectedness. So you have to have high academic expectations and rigor coupled with support for learning. So part of what we're looking at with our sophomore seminar is providing that additional support for learning. We know our high schools already have high expectations for academic rigor. And we want to be able to have one other additional way that we're supporting learning for our kids through social emotional health. And again, that positive adult-student relationship. And in this case with sophomore seminar, what our team, our task force has been talking about is that that positive student, adult-student relationship can happen outside of that classroom environment. We're going to be in a classroom, they're going to be learning, but it's going to be structured in a different way. And then finally, we're really looking at fostering that climate of care for our kids. When kids are in a situation where they have a climate of care, they have physical and emotional safety that again reinforces school connectedness. So these are the components that we're looking at when we're looking to, to develop this work. So this year, we started a social emotional wellness task force. It's comprised of teachers, counselors, and administrators from both PV High School and Peninsula High School. And we, as a group, have been meeting monthly. We did a lot of what we started out doing tonight, reviewing data, talking about what kinds of concerns our teachers and our counselors, our student support specialists, our administrators are seeing with our kids. They're on the front lines every day with those kids. They have some of those insights, that more anecdotal data of what they're seeing from their kids. But we also used our California Healthy Kids Survey data, and then really talked about kind of brainstorming ideas of what could this structure look like, what kind of content do we want? This isn't some kind of curriculum we're looking at adopting. We want to look at what are the unique needs of our kids based on the data we have, and how can we develop some seminar lessons for them that can directly impact the things we're talking about, like sleep. So again, those data-driven decisions, looking at a lot of the data I talked to you guys about tonight, school connectedness, caring adult relationships, all of those things. When we meet again, I'll share the sleep data with them. I did not have that data when we initially met, but interestingly, it ended up on their topic list anyways, and we didn't even have a data point surrounding that. So our seminar components that we discussed as a task force was kind of the who, what, where, and how are we going to do this? So the what, we really started with the brainstorming of our topic ideas. We really are working on finalizing that focus. We use data and the knowledge of our stakeholders, of the folks in the room. The one piece we wanted to make sure was that our content wasn't duplicative of anything else that was already happening on campus. So while there were topics that came up, things like suicide prevention education, I talked to the team, the task force team about the fact that we are already providing that education component for our kids in another manner. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't duplicating efforts by putting additional content in this seminar that was covered someplace else. The who component, we wanted to make sure our kids, again, had that consistent adult. So making sure that the teachers, counselors, psychologists, student support specialists, the kids are going to meet with, it's the same person you're doing this work with for the whole semester, or the whole school year, excuse me. We felt like that was really important because, again, you're trying to build that connection for the kids with other adults on campus. And then the when, it was probably the most difficult part of our discussion. We have been talking about maybe using the late start Wednesdays and having the sophomores come one time each late start. I will tell you that you'll, I discuss it later in the presentation, but I did go get some student feedback. That was the one place where they were like, wah! So I did my student feedback in January and February. We meet again next week with the team. So I'm going to bring all that feedback to them. We also talked about utilizing like special days on campus. So for example, like Coronation Day at PV High, could that, their, part of their seminar be delivered that day? Different days, different times that we could look at in the school year so that this is being delivered content one time per quarter. So we're kind of trying to be strategic in how we're doing that. The late start Wednesday has consistently been the easiest way to do it, but the kids weren't super stoked on that, which I understand. And then the how is really, the group felt strongly that this shouldn't just be a lecture for kids. I have a teenager at home, she hates when I lecture her, she stops listening. So we talked a lot about like the lab and like a lecture and lab style, that the kids have an opportunity to be able to use the content we're talking about, have interactive opportunities to do that. I gave the group an example of, I went to an event, a conference, and they had a Jenga game where the kids were talking about developmental assets, and you use Jenga to be able to do that. So you're not just lecturing on, on what types of assets are important for kids' emotional health, you're playing a game while doing it. So being able to develop those kinds of activities for the kids, I think, is important in this component. So it's not just an adult lecturing at them the whole time. So the seminar topics that our group came up with, these are the overarching topics. What we decided was each quarter, we would cover a broad topic. So first quarter, we talked a lot about purpose. As a counselor, I fell into the trap of talking to my kids a lot about passion, and I think kids get freaked out about that. So we talked about the idea of purpose. How do you belong to something? What's your purpose for school? So you're not just doing school, it's not just a checklist, but how are you engaged in the school process? How do those kids define success for themselves? If you fail, how do you overcome that? How do you rethink a setback? I think when you look at our kids who struggle with a crisis, a lot of times they're having setbacks and they don't know how to recover from those. And a lot of setbacks pile up, and then we're in a crisis mode. For second quarter, we talked about focusing on healthy living. Again, before the sleep piece came up, we had talked about topics like resilience, balance, and stress management. We wanted to talk about the importance of sleep and nutrition, and how those things can impact our kids' ability to do well in whatever they're trying to be successful at. Third quarter, we were looking at coping skills, kind of healthy versus unhealthy coping skills, talking about topics like substance use, stress management, depression. We wanted to put this in third, early in third quarter, so that if we did have kids that needed assistance, intervention routed into them, we have time for the rest of the school year to be able to provide that kind of support. And then fourth quarter, we really wanted to focus on skill development and success, things like communication skills. How do you talk to somebody? How do you engage in those? How do you handle healthy conflict and discord? I think those are challenges for our kids sometimes. How do you manage your schedule? How do you have emotional regulation when you're feeling upset? How do you deal with that so that you can kind of get yourself back on a path? So those are really topics that we, we want to focus on because we feel like they support our kids in high school, but also beyond high school. And I think that's our, a piece of our goal here, too. So our upcoming steps, the one thing we talked out as adults, we had a lot of adult voice in the room. So in the month of February, I did go to both PV High School and Peninsula High School. Thank you very much to the teachers that opened their classrooms to me and gave me quite a lot of time to talk with their kids. Their kids were open and honest, gave me really great feedback. So I think that piece of it, being able to hear from them, I'll be honest with you, the kids liked the topics, the kids want opportunities to talk to adults at school. Just from research that I've done, when a kid has a friend that's in crisis, kids say the number one person they turn to is their teacher. And so how are we giving kids access and opportunity to be able to do that? Dr. Tyner and Dr. Kikendall have both been very involved in this process. So they have been giving updates to their faculties and talking as well to their parent groups, their PTA groups, their booster club groups and things like that. They're working through that this month in March, well, in March in a few days. So then our group is coming back together to really finalize our model and get the feedback from our kids. One thing the kids really wanted to see us incorporate that I actually think is really cool is some kind of peer component. They talked a lot about how that as a sophomore, it would be really great to get advice from a senior. Seniors were giving me feedback that like, I wish when I was a sophomore, I would have had a, a senior who was talking to me about these kinds of things. And then as a senior, do you have some tips and tricks that you can kind of impart on your sophomore friend that you can kind of help? So what does that look like as having our peer involvement? And then lesson development, again, we want to make sure that this is addressing the unique needs of our kids, and we want it to be interactive. We want these lessons to be engaging for them. And so I, in my opinion, we have excellent teachers that can help us do that, to help us bring together expertise from our counselors and our student support specialists, and then our teachers on how we address these needs of our kids. And then really hoping to bring forward to you folks in April, kind of our final program and what that looks like, and then rolling out some teacher training. I do want to just thank the teachers and the counselors and the student support specialists who have left their school and left their classrooms and left their offices to do this work with me. Their input has been super valuable. So just to give them a shout out, I know you'll indulge me. Becky Dibble, Mark Greenberg, Kelly Baranek, Susan Pollak, Barbara Gani, and Dr. Kikendall from PV, from Peninsula High School, from PV High, Karen Cistrungis, Christina Varela, Jennifer Egan, Tasha Barton, Gemma Maxfield, Kristen Nestle, and Kelly Washington, as well as Dr. Tyner, have all been involved in this process. And their input has been just extremely valuable, and they've all opened up their classrooms and given their time. And they're going to hopefully continue to give me their time through the rest of the year. So that's where we're at in terms of the sophomore seminar.
Well, thank you. That feels like you've come a long way in a short time on that. That's, it's actually very encouraging. Looking forward to hearing from you again in April. Was there anything that anybody wanted to ask to get clarified?
No, go ahead, no. Of course, there's questions. There's always questions.
Okay. A couple of questions. How did you decide on sophomores instead of like freshmen, for example? Because like, it's a, such a big transition year, right? Sixth grade, ninth grade. These topics seem awesome. You know, I feel like it might be good for incoming freshmen to have that so that they're set up for success in high school. So why do you choose sophomores?
So as a task force, we talked about the fact that at both of our high schools, our freshmen get a link crew program. So they are already getting a transition program to provide them support coming in. We also have some new information coming through with the California Healthy Youth Act, where they're going to be covering some of that content in their biology classes, things, things with their guidance lessons with their counselors on healthy relationship building and all of those things. So that's kind of, and then junior year, clearly too late, senior year, you're on your way. So kind of sophomore year felt like the sweet spot for us, given that freshmen already are getting a lot of support when they're coming in. And sophomore year just seemed like the right place to give additional tier one support to our kids.
And we also, through the process, I think initially, when the task force first got together, they're like, every year, lessons for everyone. And we're like, okay, let's start with one year first, be successful, you know, make this roll out just kind of a little bit slow, and then we can, you know, then move out to other grade levels if we feel like we have the capacity to do that and we can do it well.
We also thought that sophomores is, they're, they're just a little bit older. So they're becoming young adults. And so we can have more mature conversations with sophomores.
Everybody in high school knows, the only thing worse than a freshman is a sophomore. Right. So, yeah. Make sure you take care of them.
So the lessons, so I know that it's still being worked out, but you have one to two lessons per quarter. So are you still, I mean, is that, is that like you're just meeting once or twice per quarter, or?
Correct.
For how long?
We talked about probably about an hour and a half is about the amount of time if we do late starts, that the kids would be able to be in there. The kids felt like anything less than an hour wasn't worth it. And they didn't, and we agreed as a group. The other pieces in some place, we're trying to align some of the other work that's already done with the counselors, like the suicide prevention education, and making sure that those things are kind of mapped out so that we have a whole plan where the kids are getting the sophomore seminar content along with the counseling and guidance lessons. So it's continual information. What we've talked about is they cover things like, for example, depression and anxiety, and like the suicide prevention education presentation. So if we tie that along with the, with the coping skills lesson, so the timing is the same, we can kind of layer those on top of each other. So the kids are getting some information through the teachers and the sophomore seminar, and then some reinforcement of those, of that information. So that's kind of what we're looking at, the one to two times a quarter, depending on what the information is.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like, I mean, these are such in-depth topics. And if it is like, an hour and a half, twice, like three hours, I don't feel like that's enough. Like, if, if we're actually trying to do something and like, have that lecture piece, but also have that interaction, I'm just thinking like, a regular lesson at school, like three days, it's, it's just, I don't know, I feel like then I, I wish they would have more. But you guys are the experts and can get feedback on that. But that's my.
Well, it's one of the challenges that we're working through.
Yeah.
Is how do we deliver enough depth of content without encroaching too much on teacher time, right? Because at the high school level, you know, they have a lot of content that they need to get through. And so it's, it's a really delicate balance that we're trying to strike here. And I think the input from the staff has been really good, but we are, we're challenged with time. We wish we had more time with kids always. So it's one of the challenges.
The other thing, sorry, the other thing the task force has talked about is ways to identify kids that need more. How can we do that? Is there a way, either the students self-identifying that they need more, or how can the teacher or the person who's delivering the content, if we can find a way to figure out kids who need more, and then could we do small group, like smaller group, like counseling groups, like with our student support specialists or something like that, for the kids who need more support based on whatever that topic is? So that is something that has come up with the task force, is how could we do that to be able to provide more support for kids that, that do need it? Not that all kids don't, but if we could specifically identify kids that we know definitely do, to give more support, that's been something else that's been talked about as well.
My last question. I feel like it could go with the personal development and success piece, is the topic of financial literacy with our students. Like, I would love to see that as a graduation requirement. I'm not sure if that's something that's been talked about, but it definitely goes in with this overall topic of personal development and success, budgeting, dealing with debt and loans, investing. Like, I feel like we can't rely on parents to teach those skills. And it's like, you expect eighteen-year-olds to graduate and then take on all this debt potentially to go to college? Like, you know, they may be discussing it in econ, like, they weren't, for me, it's just like you, like, we're expecting parents to teach that. So has that ever been a discussion for this seminar, or would that be a better place somewhere else?
It was, it was part of our initial discussion, just because we knew that it is an important topic. There's been a number of different things. And when we started to get narrow on time, we started to have to then really prioritize what our topics were. While we think all of them are really important, we're just struggling with the amount of time that we are getting with our students. And so when we were paring down the topics and what, narrowing it, we really had to kind of just make some decisions about what we felt really were important. And not that financial literacy is not important, I think that's super important. But we talked about other places where potentially it could go, like at the end of the year, if there's like a senior panel or something like that, we can put something there. But we're just having a hard time with FaceTime. Yeah.
Thank you. Both of our high schools are doing some kind of a senior seminars this year. So we've talked about, is there a place where they could put some financial literacy in the future in there, before the kids are going to college? Like, you know, hey, don't take that credit card when they're offering it to you when you're on the way to the you're on the way to the football game just to get the free t-shirt or whatever. So those kinds of things they have talked about as maybe a place to be able to put that to.
Board member Phillips will be happy to know we're also going to be talking about consent as well.
To piggyback on Maken's point, you know, I love personal safety, situational awareness to be an important part of, you know, as our students leave the Hill, they're leaving our, our safe bubble and they're going out into places where a lot of these college campuses are, or wherever they go are not, not really conducive to having your head buried in your phone or your headphones on. So whatever things that you guys have decided to eliminate from this program, if we could look to see where, and I'm sure you are, where those could be possibly added on elsewhere, you know, if it's a situational awareness, is that something that's done in a PE class, right? You know, finding places that we can start plugging in whatever we're missing on the seminar. And I don't want, you know, perfect to be the enemy of done, right? Let's get this done, let's see how this works and then we can always adjust and modify. Speaking of perfect, perfect is boring and, you know, our students don't need to be perfect. You know, our students, our imperfect students are fascinating, they're special, they're wonderful and parents need to know that. This district is not just here for the perfect students. We're here for every student. And I know that when you're comparing against, you know, my goodness, you see some of these kids and their accomplishments and you look at your own child and you're like, oh, but no, that's the vast majority of us, right? We have, we're human, we have children who are human. We all struggle and we all need to know it's okay to reach out and ask for help. That's why we're setting these programs up, that's why we're doing those things. Don't think just because your student isn't, you know, a 4-0, going to an Ivy League, that they're any less valuable to us or to the world than anybody else. So if we can just go back real quick, a few slides, and the reason I'm, one of the reasons I'm mentioning this, a couple more, one more. Okay, so critical requirements for school connectedness, high academic expectations. And I'm personally really trying to get away from this idea of high academic expectations and more towards student success, right? Where it's an idea that you don't have to have straight As to be successful, right? I'd rather students take risks, take a class they weren't comfortable with and get a B than take what they are comfortable with and get straight As. So as we move forward, that's just my hope, is that we really start focusing on student success as opposed to academic, high academic achievement. And if I may, sorry, quickly is, in all the healthy kids studies, you know, how, we have a very small limited GATE program here and I'm curious how they are coping because, you know, GATE students are on the one end of the special education spectrum. And are we identifying any additional problems or are they pretty much falling into the norm? And just, it came to my mind late, so if you could get that information at some point, I'd appreciate it.
I mean, anecdotally, we can look at the data and we can, we'd have to look one by one, student by student. We're not seeing necessarily a spike or a trend with our GATE students. And then California Healthy Kids doesn't identify, we can't stratify that data.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's hard for us to disaggregate that piece, but we could look, you know, by risk assessment.
Just, I want to ask you to do that, but just to keep an eye out, right? Let's just be cognizant that we don't have a very robust GATE program, so we don't want these students to, to fall through the cracks. Thank you.
I just had a quick question and a comment. My question is, is none of this curriculum content is driven by the California Healthy Youth Act requirements, correct? I think, I was at a PTA meeting yesterday and I think we were all confused as to as what, if any of this is part of that, because we talked a little bit about, there's a high school, some districts have a high school health class and this is not, this is driven by us. It's not driven by, at all by those requirements and those are taken care of in seventh and ninth grade?
Biology and life science, so.
Okay.
Whatever kids take.
Okay. All right, so I wanted to make sure that part was, was clear and would be, should be clear to parents, I guess, as well. And then my comment is only that I would vote to leave our kiddos with their late start dates. I don't get a vote and that's how it's supposed to be and we'll support whatever you end up doing. But I heard, I've heard loud and clear from our students and from our parents that that time is rare and is valuable. I was at Penn High's site council meeting a couple of weeks ago and I was horrified about how many kids are sitting outside the library on a late start day with their computer at like 7:45 in the morning. I'm like, what are you doing here? Like, why are you here? You should be in bed asleep, take some cereal and go home. And it was just like that, so that, like, it really struck me that, like, they should be sleeping at that day that they can. And I think it's a day, like, it helps you mentally get through the week when you know, okay, I gotta get to Wednesday and then I gotta get to Saturday, right? And so that's a feedback I heard from parents at PV High yesterday and I obviously, we hear, I'm sure that's what you heard from students, but of course I don't have a solution for you, other than taking a period out here and there during the year if you can. You know, on the days where sophomores and juniors test, freshmen and seniors sometimes have free time, but that doesn't help you with this. It helps you maybe with some of the other pieces that you could fit in, but it doesn't help you with this because the sophomores are the ones doing all that stuff. So if anything we can do to support that conversation in any way, I know we'd, I would be happy to do that, because that's a tough, other than pulling a period out here and there, you know, minimum days are good times where sometimes a lot of stuff's not happening academically, so maybe that time would be valuable, I don't know. That was it, thank you.
Okay.
Like, I don't think we know how we're actually going to implement late start across the district in two years or one year if we do it early.
We do not know.
Right, and so, and so.
We're thinking of late start in two different ways. There's that late start and then there's the late start.
My point was, we don't know if that's going to persist.
True, right, that's true.
In more than, in more than two years. So when you're thinking of the delivery model, take, take that, take that into account. And I guess I am curious about the delivery model. So what are you thinking about here for class sizes that, that this gets delivered in? I'm hoping it's not, you know, all 400 sophomores.
Oh, no, we're looking at regular, like, small class size, 30 kids, two adults.
And so that you, and you'd have them all on the same day or you'd have them on multiple days to get through all 400 at PV?
All on the same day is our goal. Yeah.
So kids would like file through at their timeframe or their?
We're hoping that we would have enough teachers that would want to volunteer to participate, that they would have enough adults to be able to do this.
Oh, so all the kids go for the hour and a half in different places? Okay, they're assigned different rooms, okay.
Good, and I'm really glad that we're doing this. I think that this is a, a good advancement for our district to take the lead in.
And we're looking at all folks participating, like our school counselors, our student support specialists, our school psychologists, so any, me and Lindsay, yeah, we've both offered to participate too. I like this kind of stuff.
Maybe you get those seniors to lead, you know, some fraction of the classes, because I remember, back when I was in this class, I listened to the senior, or I'd listen to, you know, the students much more than I'd listen to teachers on some.
And that was a big piece that came from both high schools, is how can you get the peer support piece involved to have kids involved in the classroom too? So that's something they're really interested in.
And then my last request, thanks for consent, is teenage brain development, which I think kind of fits in probably with your coping skills subject area. It's already in there, I guess.
I talk about this all the time. I was like, I really want parents to understand teenage brain development. I think kids need to understand teenage, I've been talking to Dr. Ramirez about this over and over, ad nauseam, so.
So, thanks.
Well, we look forward to hearing back in April, how you work it out. And I do think it's a good point that we don't know how the calendar day will change when we have to roll back everyone's start time in high school. So that can be a gift because a lot of things will change, right? So then the expectations will change across the board. So that's okay. And maybe this will become a thing in a couple of years where we have, you know, subject matter seminars that all kids could attend because they're fun and they have certain teachers that are willing to teach them for certain subjects and they could be after school. And I think it could grow into a much more robust, you know, opportunity for our kids. And I think that we have a lot of adults that want to share something that they don't teach necessarily. So I think it could really end up being quite, quite good. So that's it, I guess.
I like that idea.
Thank you. So is that it? Okay, you can go home. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Your three hours are under schedule.
Yeah, we're stressed out watching you say, "Go home." The rest is actually not nearly as fun as the last couple of hours. All right, so now we are on to O3, Approval of Comprehensive School Safety Plans. And I actually had written down a bunch of questions, not a bunch, but some stuff. And really it's, I figured it would already be addressed and it really has been. A lot of it was clarified for me, so that is good. Does anybody else on the board have any questions about that set of reports that we're going to approve?
Very brief ones.
Okay.
Glad to see restorative justice being used across the district, I love that. My question revolves around, is it mandatory to publish the egress routes online? What I don't want is, you know, if we're telling students how to escape or how they're going to escape, for that information to be common knowledge, right? So is it, do we, must we report that online or can we keep that?
So everything that's in there is required by the safety plans? What we don't put in is we don't put the maps of like where?
Okay, good. And that, that was the part that I was most concerned about, right? Was we don't want anybody to say, oh, this is where the students come out, that's, right? So, and then just Ridgecrest, making sure that we're really looking at the traffic safety and student safety at Ridgecrest.
Okay, anybody else have anything they wanted to? Linda?
Two quick things. One is just the fact that facilities and fencing are a big part of some of these plans. And if we don't have adequate fencing, we can't do a lot of things. And the last thing is kind of part of what you've all been talking about is just noting too, that a third of our kids have experienced bullying and what that looks like in the future. And anecdotally, I think it's better, and anecdotally, I think it's better in high school than middle school, but that's anecdotally, right? So just keeping track of that as a piece and for our parents to know that these documents are always available to look at and all parents should read them.
On bullying, I wanted to give a shout out to Rancho Del Mar, which had the lowest bullying number of any of our campuses. So at least that's something that they're doing right there. And the other number that stood out unfortunately is one that we've talked about already, which is the sadness, hopelessness, and particularly at Penn. And so I kind of wonder what's going on there, but there's a huge increase between ninth and 11th grade. So I think that falls back into the other actions on your, your prior topic.
I'm hoping a sophomore seminar can help with the anxiety and complete lack of a life in 11th grade for most of our kids because they create a schedule that not any human could really compete with. You know, every day it's just too much. So I hope that that's an outcome of that and that will improve that, that number also.
Yeah, just adding on to the chronic sadness and hopelessness, the considering suicide numbers in intermediate and high school was also devastating. Again, Penn being the highest with 11th graders at 24%, so a quarter of the 11th graders have considered suicide at some point. And then the rest are at least 10%, 10 to 16, or 10 to 18. So that's just really sad. So again, I hope that, you know, what we're doing brings that number down, but, but seeing that 24% just shocked me really. Again, I know that the high schools are different, but, you know, nine more percent than the other school, than PV High. And, and again, the jumps between ninth and 11th and even, you know, seventh grade and then going into high school. So just something to keep looking at, yeah.
So you know that we actually read all these reports, because look at all the comments you just got. Yeah. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve these reports?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the comprehensive school safety plans for 2019-20.
Do I have a second? Okay, great. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes, five to zero. Now a four CSBA delegate assembly election. Huh? Yes, thank you, Teresa. Yeah. Okay, so we are going to vote for, I guess I should open my computer for this. We have to vote for six, and I believe we have six candidates.
I think last year we cast a bullet vote.
We did, but this time we have six candidates and we have six spots.
We should do that anyways. Cast the bullet vote, just to make the point, that we like our local South Bay people and we don't like anybody else.
Really?
There's like three South Bay people.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this time there's more.
Yeah.
Well.
It's fine, whatever you guys want to do.
However, I just figured we'd do all six. Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I know one of these people, but I don't feel strongly.
So it says six candidates have been nominated for the six vacancies. So, you know, silly me, I thought this would be like a one-minute item and we would just go, six, six, okay, let's move on down the road, but let's have a conversation about how we want to do it instead. So we can, we bullet voted last year because we wanted to make sure that one person got in. And then remember we had to do like a runoff and all kinds of weird things?
There was a runoff.
I mean, it was, yeah. So I will wait for it.
That was two years ago, I think.
Was it two? Ah, the years run together. So I'm going to wait for a motion from somebody to move on this item.
I, I don't know, I don't know how other people are feeling, but I mean, I've read all of their, you know, their summaries about themselves and their interests. I thought that they were all good and had good qualities, so.
Make a motion.
Yeah, so go ahead and read it. Do you see it there, O4?
Wait, what am I reading?
The motion, if you want to make the motion.
This one?
Yeah.
So I move that the board cast its vote, that one? Okay. I move that the board cast its vote for up to six individuals for the vacant seats in Region 24, Southwest Crescent in Los Angeles County of the CSBA Delegate Assembly.
Got to say six.
You gotta say who we're voting for.
Oh, sorry, the, sorry.
Just say, just say the six.
Okay. I move that the board cast its vote for the six.
Perfect.
Individuals for the vacant seats in Region 24, Southwest Crescent, Los Angeles County of the CSBA Delegate Assembly.
Second.
Perfect, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Passes five, zero. So.
It was easy.
It was easy, woo-hoo! Okay, now, in case anyone has not noticed, this used to be on the consent and last meeting, a board member asked to move it off of consent and put it on the regular agenda. So that has happened, one thing not done from last meeting that was asked to have done. So acceptance of gifts, would anyone like to speak to this item before we make a motion to accept it?
Thank you so much for moving this off consent. It makes it a lot easier not to have to go, yeah, P1 through P4 minus, you know, again, 60, over $60,000 was gifted to the district since our last meeting, $41,000 from a booster club. And here's one that doesn't have a price tag, but I thought was just terrific, a gift of 473 trash cans from Simple Human. That is a big donation.
Some kids asked me why we had the fancy expensive trash cans and I didn't know why. Now I know why. There are, I don't have to have some.
Yeah, so you're glad that we.
They were free, okay, good, I got harassed about that, actually.
Yeah, no, a gift of 473 trash cans from Simple Human. Thank you, Simple Human.
I mean, they are noticeably different than the rest of the trash cans.
Can I promote a little bit more? Go to www.simplhuman.com, whatever. Thank you guys so much for, for that donation and everybody else who has given, again, total this report, 62,000, year to date, three, over $3.5 million donated to the district. That's it, thank you.
Are you going to make a motion?
Oh, yes. I move that we accept with pleasure the gifts and material supplies in 62,000, $62.83 in cash received January 29th, 2020 through February 13th, 2020 and be accepted as presented.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now, consent calendar, do we have anybody pulling anything from consent?
No.
No.
No. No. Do you have anything from consent?
Nope.
No. Okay. Then, can we get a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I want to do that. I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That motion passes, five-zero. And now, we are on to. Yeah, it was P4? Okay, it was on there. Okay. So then Q, future agenda items. Do we have anything that we're going to add on to future agenda items that, from last time? Do we want to add anything?
Yes.
So you can see the list? I don't, yeah, the list on, on the actual agenda is from last time? So don't mention those things because they're already on there. Just saying.
Keeping it to three. So one, looking at financial literacy slash adulting class for our high school students or class or information type. Second, again, looking at a potential quote ending time for board meetings. And the reason why I'm saying that is not because I'm trying to like get out and leave early and don't want to be here. I just know that we have stayed late, you know, a few times, 10:30, 11 o'clock. And I feel like that we're not making our best decisions that late. So Redondo Beach has that policy. They, they vote, they vote though at that time at 9:00 PM whether they'd like to continue or not. So again, something to look into and discuss if people would like that. And lastly, just would like us to discuss our outdoor ed opportunities for our students with elementary and middle school and kind of align it all together and see where we could potentially improve. Again, partner with our, you know, PvP land conservancy or other groups and how we can improve that. So those are my three.
Okay. Matt, you tell me.
Yes, please. I would like us to discuss the Allen Bill and class sizes. Just perhaps a board policy that sets a limit to class sizes that we allow at Allen Bill to fill. So, and if we are going to run into over numbers on students, you know, let's say that we, as a district, wanted to have 30 students per classroom, would be to, when the student is enrolled, do we limit to 30 any Allen Bill admissions?
I mean, I think we've, we can bring, we can get you permission, but I think that we've already got that figured out with the way we do.
So our, our policy is on space availability.
Right.
However, we can look at, we can take a deeper dive and look at how that policy relates to class size.
Is if a space, is if a space is available?
Right.
And we say that 34 is available, is that really what's best? We need to balance with the, the financial gains from these students versus class size. And I think it's worthy of the board's attention to, to look and see what the best arrangement that we can make.
Sure. Okay. So you know, you know what he's, okay. And did you have another one?
No, I think, Dr. Chernus, you will bring up the engineering for the buildings at a later point, correct? Thank you.
Rick, did you have anything you wanted?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay, Linda?
You know, I had one, but I think it's putting the cart before the horse. I want us to, so I'll, I'll, I want to talk to Dr. Chernus and send you, have Janice send an article for you guys about, talking about the idea of middle college and what that is in terms of a hybrid high school, junior college situation. But we'd have to look at Rancho Del Mar. It's a very complicated topic, but I just thought it'd be interesting maybe for us to read up about it and see what we think about it. And it might be a budget positive or a budget negative. I don't know. So, but I think I don't want to agendize it.
Right.
No, I think we have some more talking and stuff to do about it first, so.
I've actually wondered about that myself, so. That'd be good. So then I just have one item that may not need to be agendized, but I am curious that we have always been a district that doesn't use the Google or the G Suite, you know, platform? We have chosen, huh?
Microsoft.
Yeah, we're Microsoft. So I'm not even a fan of Google, to be honest with you, but our kids use it pretty much all the time. They don't care that we already pay for Outlook or that we get it as part of our deal or whatever our deal is, right? So I would like to take a look at the, that, you know, entire decision-making idea. And I would like us to look at it under the lens of privacy. Because what I want more than anything is for our kids to have privacy with their work. Which is why I don't like Google for the most part, right? But maybe Google education is different. I don't know that it really is. But I certainly know that even at our schools, when they have special programs and it'll say, "If you're interested in doing this thing, go to blah 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 at gmail.com." So our own schools really don't use our free email addresses that they could have gotten through Outlook for stuff that they, you know, they, they use Google. So I, it just seems like we should look at that and see, you know, if that makes any kind of sense or if we're going to keep using Microsoft. And I had mentioned Apex earlier, so if you look into the, I think we need to talk about that series of fundraisers and what that does and what that doesn't do. And beyond the raising funds, just about the education pieces with using that, those character building kind of programs. So those are my two. Okay, moving right along then. Report of board members. Does anyone want to go first? Trying to mix it up, people. Anybody want to go first? Okay.
So did have the pleasure of visiting both Penn High and Monta Malaga in the last two weeks. Enjoyed both those visits. Always learn something when I go to a, a school site and, you know, in terms of the effectiveness of the various programs that we've put in. Glad to hear that our principals are supportive of most of the things that we've, you know, we've put on the campuses, especially in the area of mental health. Got to be a science fair judge, always one of my favorite activities. And pleased to say that there's a correlation with being a board member as a student and being a winner in the science fair, going ISF, and even to actually being an attendee at a board meeting and speaking. So the, the winners at the science fair, besides, there's tons of winners in all the categories, but the ones that are going on to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Anaheim are Suraj Anand, Ash Garg, Savannah Striget Scriven, who was last year, and Elijah Johnston. So congratulations. And that, that's a real achievement. I, I think ISF is a, you know, an amazing event and has real geniuses from around the world doing their, their science projects. And then lastly, wanted to remind everybody that actually voting is underway. If you want to cast a ballot tomorrow, the vote center is open at Rolling Hills City Hall from 8:00 to 5:00 PM until Election Day. And then all vote centers will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Election Day. You can cast your ballot anywhere in LA County. It doesn't matter where you live. Make it convenient. Go to any place close to work, close to home, any, any vote center. But if you want to cast your ballot on the Hill, you can come to one of our six school sites that's actually open. Mary Catalina in Merrill West, Cornerstone Vista Grande, Lunada Bay Elementary or PV High. And if you want to go to one of the other city places besides Rolling Hills City Hall, there's La Dara Linda Community Center and the Malga Cove Library and the Penn Center Library. And those other vote centers will open on Saturday and be open 8:00 to 5:00, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And then they will be open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Election Day. And, and they all have what's called a ballot marking device, which is going to be a touch tone screen where you can get your ballot in, I think it's 14 different languages. And if you are sight impaired, you can listen to your ballot. So they're all accessible voting booths. And one thing that I would caution you is that for any race that has more than four candidates to actually vote for, to see all the candidates and decide which one you want to vote on, you need to hit the button that says "more" and not "next." So if there's a "more" button that's got a flashing yellow thing around it, please hit the "more" button so you can see all your choices before you cast your ballot and hit "next." Thanks.
I just want to share with you guys an article from today's paper because I always like to talk about the inefficiency of government at the county and the state level. And it turns out that the lottery system owes millions of dollars to state schools. So we can all agree, we might not agree on a lot, but we can all agree that the lottery should not be spending a lot of overhead money on, on trips and various perks for the people who work for the lottery. That money should be going to our schools, our teachers, and our programs. So think about that. We like to keep our money local. We don't like to give our money to Sacramento. And when it is in Sacramento, we'd like to actually get it back when it's owed it to us. So you can look up today's LA Times online and find the story about it. It's excellent reporting and something we should all keep in mind going forward. That's all I have.
I thought about asking if you want to co-write a letter to them, to the state, to the Gavin Newsom. Like, are you kidding me?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Can we not do better than this?
I'd be happy to do that.
Let's do that.
But you're the president of the board, but, but I'd be happy to work with you.
You're a great writer.
I would, I'd be happy to work with you on that because I think it's just an example of, of waste that's everywhere where adults are taking advantage of kids. So that's something we should all keep in mind going forward, for sure. That's all I have.
Only thing for me is to go out and vote. There's a lot of different races and issues that are on the ballot, so please go vote. Be an educated voter. Make sure that you do thorough research and are looking at accurate data with whatever race or issue you're looking at. So that's it. Just go vote and be an educated voter.
And Matt?
Thank you. Dr. Chernus and I got to tag Team Teach this morning. And he's a much better teacher than I am, but my handwriting was slightly better on the whiteboard, as was pointed out by, by others. And it was, it was great. This is all for Capitol Convoy. And I really felt for our teachers when you're looking out into the eyes of, you know, 11th graders at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning. And they are like zombies. Like, I really appreciate what late start is now. And, but it was, it was great. The, the kids are great. Dr. Chernus' presentation was very informative. So very much looking forward to our trip to Capitol Convoy where we're going to advocate for AB 39, which is full and fair funding. Basically what that does is it brings, brings the base level of funding up across all districts in the state. And so, I also, speaking of Gate earlier, I got hot off the press by pure coincidence a copy of a local elementary school's Gate newspaper. So Gate and high achieving students took, you know, worked with teachers on a, like the teachers volunteered to, to help and the principals and to get this paper done. And it's great, even though I do, I must complain that there's a super school word search on the back, but no answer key. Sorry. So I'm a little disappointed, but I guess I'll just have to, to work that one out. On a serious note, the reason, there's discussion about our, our bond that's out there right now. And a lot of people have said, "A bond, but not this bond. Come back in November." There is no guarantee that this board would approve another bond in November. We haven't discussed it. We aren't going to discuss it until after this measure. One way or another, we'll, we'll have to address it at our next board meeting. But to, to make the assumption that this board would automatically approve another bond measure in November is incorrect. And I think it's important that we went out there with this list and said, "These are the needs of the district." We asked the community, we said, "This is what we need to keep our schools operating at the level that they are and to set them up for the next 30, 40, 50 years." If the community comes back and says, "No, we don't want to operate the way that we have," then it's decisions that we'll have to make down the road. But again, just the assumption that a second bond be a foregone conclusion would be incorrect.
Okay. That leaves me.